Good evening, everyone. It's about a minute to go, but because we have an incredibly busy agenda, I'm suggesting we start as soon as possible so that we can get through the evening and you don't have to stay overnight. So, welcome, everybody. I've just got the usual announcements to make, the emergency evacuation procedures. In the case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately, following the green fire exit signs out to the assembly point, which is by the War Memorial in Duke Street. If anyone requires assistance, please let me know. Lifts should not be used. Please remain at the assembly point and do not attempt to return into the building until you have been advised to do so. Facilities, the toilets are on this floor, at the top of the landing, on the main staircase, and on the ground floor in the customer service centre. This event will be filmed. The filming of the event, anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but I should point out that only the councillors, officers, and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. The meeting is also to be broadcast via YouTube and recorded. When speaking, please may I remind the committee to ensure that you turn on your microphone and speak closely into it. A red light will appear on the middle button to indicate that your microphone is switched on. When finished speaking, please remember to turn your microphone off again. And just a reminder with mobile phones, put them to silent or stun so that they don't interrupt. Thank you. So can we have apologies for absence, please, Jan?
Thank you, Chair. We got apologies from councillor Young and councillor Franks, councillor Chris Davidson and councillor Janita Sushin will be substituting respectively. We also received apologies from councillor Canning. Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of the minutes, these were pre-circulated. Can I have agreement that the minutes are correct? Thank you. And the decision and action sheet, again, that was pre-circulated and is pretty self-explanatory. If there are any questions on that, please say so, or it is as produced. Are we happy with that? Good, thank you. Declarations of interest, all members are reminded they must disclose any interests they know they have in terms of business on the meeting's agenda, and that they must do so at this point in the agenda, or as soon as they become aware of the interest. If the interest is a disclosable peculiar interest, they are also obliged to notify the monitoring officer within 28 days of the meeting. Has anyone got any interests to declare? No? Okay, we'll now move on to public question time. And I know we have several people here to ask questions. If we can go first to Mr T Kindred. And if you'd like to go to the microphone, I'll just remind you I have two minutes maximum to ask your question. Thank you.
So, thank you. One of the lovely things about Hoyners is the fact that the children from different families play outside on their bikes or running around on the grass playing tag. This is especially important since many of the gardens are a bit small, or being an ex-sandpit, very steep. I did a geographical search on mine and my wife's phones and found the attached photos that give a bit of an idea just how that little grassy area is appreciated by our children throughout the seasons. The photos are a reminder of how lovely it used to be. It really is an important informal play area, and I think we should be encouraging children to play outside. When the children are out playing or just walking to school, shops, we don't want to have to worry about them standing on litter or dog mess or that it's hiding in the undergrowth, or the risk of them being bitten by ticks from the long grass and associated Lyme disease risk. Therefore, my question is, were you aware that this area is used for informal recreation for our children? And will Chelmsford City Council please resume maintenance of this area so our children can use it to play again?
Thank you very much, Mr Kindred. Councillor Moore, do you want to hear the questions and then answer them on block? Or do you want to answer separately?
If all the members who are the public here tonight are asking around the same area, then yes, if they'd be kind enough to read all of their questions so we can understand the full picture. Thank you.
We have one question on policing, but I think we can put that at the end. After you've answered the question, I'll go to that member of the public and get that one asked as well. I think that will make it clearer. Thank you. Would Mrs King please ask your question?
This is in regard to the common land between Belfordia and Littlefields in Danbury, and my house sits behind that land. And the existing rewinding of the site by the council is failing. The existing grasses and unwanted invasive plants have been allowed to flourish and grow to an exorbitant and unsightly height. This affects our sightlines when trying to exit our properties. The council's solution of only cutting the grass along the verge just increases how high and unsightly the rest of the area looks and does not address the problems of sightlines. My husband and I purchased our property in February 2020. If the current policy of rewinding was in place at that time, we would not have considered purchasing this house due to the unsightly look. We feel the rewinding is detrimental to the value of our property and would deter any potential future buyers. Rubbish gathers in the uncut grass and creates further health and safety issues. From your own policy, there should be a maintenance strategy. What is this and how does it address the frequency of litter picking, assessing sightlines, and enriching the biodiversity of this specific area? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Some pictures were circulated which applied to both this question and the previous one. Could Mrs Jay Tattersall please ask her question?
Madam Chairman, councillors, my question is about our estate Hoyners Danbury in the context of the city council's own policy for the creation and management of species-rich grassland. Points 37 and 38 of the policy refer to, quote, amenity grassland area, which Hoyners certainly is. And it is in a more urbanised location. The policy suggests that balancing, and this is quotation, aesthetic and informal recreational use with the more natural aspirations should apply. Well, the question of aesthetics for Hoyners has certainly not been considered. The area becomes very unsightly in the summer and early autumn, and it cannot be used for the said informal recreation, as it has been for over 40 years, and I have photos to prove it. Houses have been bought and sold on the understanding that gatherings could be held there. Indeed, the developers of the estate were refused planning permission for two houses on the site so that there could be green space for the residents. The city council has now taken this away, and the 59 households feel betrayed. Under point 39 of the policy, I quote, there is benefit for, it is of a benefit for wildflowers to have less frequent cutting. Well, this has not led to plant diversity or enrichment of the grassland in Hoyners, as head-high cow parsley dominates, and incidentally is less successful in soaking up carbon emissions than a diversity of plants would be. And that was according to the Royal Horticultural Society last year. Wildlife doesn't need enhancing, as there's already plenty in the Hoyners Gardens. Again, under this point, the policy says that it considers other priorities and informal recreation and where longer grass would cause a potential safety hazard. There is certainly a risk of fire from uncontrolled tall grass in hot, dry summers. Also, sharp objects and dog waste may be hidden, so they are not picked up, which could be dangerous. So, after two years of rewilding Hoyners Danbury, will the city council now please consider cutting the grass regularly at the top of our estate in line with their own policy under numbers 37 to 39? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we have Mr Osborne, please?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and councillors. Our house sits at the back of the common land bordering the A414 between Littlefields and Belfordia. Rubbish and litter from passersby and traffic is a constant problem. The long undergrowth also catches the rubbish from the nearby fish shop and Tesco garage, resulting in an unsightly mess and encourages unwanted rodents. Allowing the grasses and unwanted invasive plants to grow to an extablident height results in an unsightly landscape and a serious fire hazard to our adjacent properties during dry periods. This was identified and pointed out to us by the Chelmsford Fire Brigade following the fires occurring during 2022. When limited cutting has been carried out, the resulting cuttings have been left uncollected. Nearby fields and forest offer plenty of opportunity for plants and insects to flourish. Allowing the site to be unattended for long periods is causing considerable stress to the residents bordering the land and results in a blot on the Danbury landscape. My question is, what do the council intend to do about it?
Thank you very much. I'm now going to ask councillor Steph Scott to ask questions on behalf of three residents and one on her own behalf. So if councillor Scott could come to the microphone, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and councillors. Actually, I've only got, I've got one question of my own and two from residents, so I'm not sure, I may have to consult with everybody on the third question. The first question is from Mr Lawrence Tattersall of Hoyners. It's a, it's a short question. To move to rewilding, you were supposed to consult the residents. Why did you force us to accept an ugly, messy, untidy, unkempt environment to live in when we all work so hard to make our properties neat, tidy, and pleasant? This is directed to the council. The next one is from Mr Philip Westlake at Hoyners. Why would the council decide to turn a pleasant glade and pond as a place of relaxation and exercise into an unkempt, unattractive scrubland with no wildflowers that becomes a hazard for the public open to abuse by litterers, dog faeces, and arsonists? Thus, changing the aspect of raw attractiveness into a, I can't say this, primordial wilderness? I live directly opposite the site in question and applaud our neighbours' efforts to preserve a small part of our wonderful natural scenic beauty. Given the pond and numerous trees, is there a specific plan for ensuring that the newts, frogs, and snakes are being protected and enabled by the current approach? That's from Mr Philip Westlake. My question, and I say I believe there is another question, but I don't have. That is, okay, anyway, okay. So this is my question to you all, Madam Chairman and councillors, on behalf of the residents of Hoyners and 71 and 73 Mauden Road. As you know, I'm one of the local ward councillors for the area, and I think it is clear how strongly residents feel. I know that many have been very upset by the effective removal of what had been a much-loved local amenity. It is not about being opposed to improving our environment and addressing climate change, absolutely not. It is about the balance that can be struck to harmonise this whole situation with other considerations clearly represented in Chelmsford City Council and their policy, such as the wellbeing and safety of our residents. Mentioned before about the litter and the possibility of fire, and the warning from the Chelmsford Fire Brigade. Please, will the council work with the residents of Hoyners and with 71, 73 Mauden Road and agree a way forward? And this hopefully will address the real concerns voiced here today and enable them to resume their enjoyment of the place in which they live. All that is required is just some helpful and sensible compromise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll now ask councillor Moore to respond to those questions. There were several different points in those that obviously you could cover them now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to the community in Danbury for coming this evening to read your questions out in person. It's much appreciated. So as a cabinet member, I have oversight of policy, and it is the responsibility and the privilege of the people I work with to carry out that policy. And the implementation of the policy is something that I've been reassured by officers is in accordance with the policy that's been agreed by this council. Information about that policy, which is the creation and maintenance of species-rich grassland, is also published online. So for any members of the public wishing to see the detail of that, you can go to Love Your Chelmsford website to view the text in detail. And I understand it was also supplied to residents who made inquiries last year. From observations on site during 2023 and 24 growing season, the area is regarded as having been maintained in accordance with our policy to create and maintain species-rich grassland. That includes the short-mown sightlines and margins along the driveways and footpaths near the Mauden Road entrances and to Hoyners. To ensure that the policy is implemented correctly, the area is regularly inspected by officers. For example, on the 24th of May 23 and the 7th of June 2023, no evidence of litter detritus or dog fowling was found on the areas mowing the sightlines. Margins along the footpaths and the driveways clear of any litter and detritus by staff, including in the longer sections of grass during growing season, when on average our staff will visit the area every three weeks. That is not to say that littering does not occur in the areas maintained by the city council, but this is in no way related to the implementation of policy, and the areas are visited regularly to clear litter and detritus. In relation to Hoyners, the bank is relatively steep here and is not particularly suitable for informal recreational use in the same way that the nearby area of Dawson's Field or the play area at Ramsay Fields can be. And the bank is, however, an example of, an example of species-rich grassland and is an ideal foraging area for pollinators, insects, and bees. And there's also evidence of a badger trail throughout the bank. With regards to the area along the Mauden Road, and I believe that's Mrs King and Mr Osborne, the area is also a good example of the species-rich grassland policy. It's, in addition to that, it's a naturalising bulb area, which I understand was planted by Danbury Parish Council with the local Rotary Club in 2021.
Can I just ask members of the public to remain silent, please, while councillor? We're not allowed to ask any more questions. You've asked your questions, that's how the rules are. I'm afraid not. We must let councillor Moore give her answer. Subsequent to this meeting, you can put in further questions in writing to councillor Moore, and if necessary, they can be reviewed at another meeting, but not tonight. You cannot ask questions now. I'm sorry.
So to clarify, I'm speaking in relation to the policy, which is a sound policy. This is the implementation of the policy, and my report has come from the officers who have reassured me that they are carrying out the implementation of that policy. And that's, that's the, the purpose of my response this evening. If we close mow all of the areas, it will destroy the work to date to create the very habitats that we are losing in droves across our district. The whole reason for this policy is to restore habitat. You mentioned newts and frogs. Well, exactly the kind of habitats that are being created, and the glade and around the base of the trees. This is all essential if we are to restore the devastating loss of biodiversity that we've seen over 60 years of a rigorous and punishing mowing regime. It's appreciated, ladies and gentlemen, that you may not agree with this policy or indeed its implementation in the area, and that you would prefer close-mown grass. But in this case, city council's policy is to prioritise a more naturalistic maintenance approach in support of our wildlife. And this is a good example of implementation of the policy. It's the cumulative effect of many smaller areas like these that will make a difference in providing support for pollinators, insects, and bees, and the wider ecosystem, including ourselves and including the generations to come, in mitigating the very impacts of the climate and the ecological emergency that we face. Thank you, Chair.
I think there was one last question, it was asked by councillor Scott, which was, was there no room for compromise?
So the director of public places here this evening, Mr Keith Nicholson, has confirmed that compromises have already been made in these areas. And the policy is sound, and we, we will not be changing the approach at this time.
Thank you, councillor Moore. We have one further question, which is a separate question on policing, from Kem Musabak, which I think we'll ask now, and I think will probably be covered in the policing presentation. Can I just say thank you very much to the members of the public who took the time to come here and ask their questions? I'm sorry that you don't feel you've had satisfactory answers. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, councillors, and police. We moved to Chelmsford approximately two and a half years ago. In these two and a half years, my son's pushback stolen in front of a shop. My two high-value pushbikes stolen from a garage by forced entry. On a different occasion, they tried to break into my car. Now it has damaged lock. My neighbour opposite burgled, and I reported, and I witnessed the crime. I challenged one of the thieves who ran away, but they were quite relaxed about for a crime which is being committed at 5:30pm in the evening. Another neighbour's door forced 10pm in the night. I witnessed numerous suspicious activity in the park nearby. I have witnessed quite a few thefts in particular shop in the town. None of the thieves seems bothered about anything, really. I had a teenager who was robbed and beaten in the town centre. No one turned up after calling 999 twice. 30 minutes later, family turned up. I don't know how, but they are faster than police. I am half asleep during nights. Should I feel safe in Chelmsford for my family and neighbours? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As I said, that will be covered in the police presentation. Thank you. If we could now move to your presentation, councillor Moore. As we've discussed, I think these were circulated, so this is highlights and things that may not have been in the pre-read that were sent round.
Thank you, Chair. It won't be an extensive slideshow, councillor Steele, simply just demarcating the, the different areas that I'm speaking on. So there won't be any, anything of, of great detail for you to have to see.
It may be useful, though, because there are slideshows to follow. So I think if we can get the lighting right now, it might be so.
Absolutely fine. Thank you. If you're sitting comfortably, I will do what I can in the half-light to get through my script this evening. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, members of Oviedo and Scrutiny, for the opportunity to update you on the greener and safer Chelmsford Cabinet portfolio this evening. So the areas of focus, these will be details which you haven't yet seen, but I wanted to update you on the latest statistics and allow a little time for any questions at the end. So we'll be covering parks and green spaces, street care, recycling and waste management, Chelmsford Market, Public Health and Protection Services, bereavement services, and Love Your Chelmsford. In May 2023, following the elections, we saw a new term of office and new cabinet roles for the returning administration. I was delighted that councillor Natasha Dudley joined us as a cabinet member for an active Chelmsford. She now has oversight of leisure services, working with John Lyons, and as well as active Chelmsford Play in the Park and Highland's House. In addition, she's very passionate about community engagement and works closely with Chelmsford CVS. We also welcomed councillor Donna Ely as Cabinet Deputy for Community Safety. I'm delighted to see she's joining us this evening, too. And councillor Terry Sherlock has become our Climate Ambassador. I'm delighted that both of these roles have been taken by serving councillors in Southwood and Ferris. So on to parks and green spaces. As you've heard, we have been carrying out the implementation of the policy for species-rich grassland. It's taking, it's taking year on year. We're seeing more and more positive results from that. I will be providing any answers to questions perhaps outside of this meeting, should there be any other queries on that policy this evening. I just wanted to highlight one of the best places that we saw developed in Melbourne Park, which is an area of deprivation in Chelmsford. Just to mention some of the materials that were used in that. Because as well as providing a great play experience, we've also used a lot of recycled items, including tyres in the flooring. We've also had posts that are made from 100% post-consumer textile and plastic wa- waste. And although, and some of the play equipment surfaces are 75% recycled waste collected from maritime industry items, such as fishing nets, ropes, and trawl nets. It's really important that we instill the ethos of reusing, recycling, and most importantly, taking care of the planet. And especially delighted to see this take its physical form in Melbourne Park, which has won the best new play area in the recent playing field awards. Phoebe's Pantry, which is a much-loved destination now in Compass Gardens, began trading on the 12th of April 2023. They've successfully established in the park and are attracting regular and new visitors and customers. The Highlands Kiosk, too, has changed hands. So the concession was re-tended in late summer and autumn of 2023, and the deli were successful. The deli successfully started trading at the kiosk in mid-November last year, and much to the delight of Highlands visitors and the consumers alike. If I can have a moment, Moore, I'd like just to mention the PSPO at Highlands, which although is Highlands Park, it's also related to Public Health and Protection Services. So an update for you is that the official PSPO signage has now been installed around the Highlands Estate. Signs are located at all entrances- Signs are located at all entrances and in car parks and other relevant areas and visitors can also see maps showing the different restricted areas in situ. These are on display in prominent positions in the park. We have advisory leaflets at the information point at the stables and our officers also have smaller leaflets to distribute to members of the public when they're out on patrol. Officers have been carrying out advisory patrols since the end of last year and they have been met with some resistance from dog walkers on occasion. Now signage is erected, we can formally issue fixed penalty notices, but as I've mentioned before, we will use the graduated and proportionate enforcement approach that was previously agreed and further comms are planned on this in due course. Highlands continues to be a popular destination for a whole variety of reasons, from dog walking to events, go ape weddings and other events at the house itself. The new cafe and outdoor adventure castle play area in Highlands Kiosk continue to attract visitors to the park and the wider estate. And a wide variety of events in estate days on the third Sunday of each month are attracting large numbers. Visitor numbers, including car parking numbers, are broadly tracking those we saw in twenty twenty-one to twenty-two and there are no indications that any changes in visits or usage can be identified from this data. I will move on because I'm conscious that we had many questions at the start and I don't want to eat into any time for the further presentations. So just one very quick note that John Shannon Field, a much-loved space in Molsham, the area of Chelmsford, is on the pathway to becoming a local nature reserve. Works have been underway for some time and we will update members in due course on the next steps, but it's, it's really providing a beautiful space and a much-loved amenity for the local community. In terms of street care, and I have some papers available, should members wish to see these, the local environment quality, these indicate trends and the twenty twenty-two to twenty-three performance from April twenty-three are available. And we also have a summary of the Love Your Chelmsford summary, Caring for Our Streets and Public Places. I think I'll, I'll distribute those to members afterwards if that would be helpful and save us time because there's a lot to drill down. Unfortunately, we are seeing a general rise in litter, especially litter thrown from cars, which is a blight on the landscape. And sadly, we, it's very difficult to clear some of the major roads, obviously because of the risk to our crews, but we've also had cuts unfortunately from county, also facing financial complications as we all are at local authority level. So we do what we can. All I would say is please, please report hotspots so we can make sure that we get on top of this before things are added to and we start seeing more fly tips. This is, is something that we can all do as councillors. In terms of recycling and waste management, we are the collection authority for the Chelmsford, the whole Chelmsford district area. And there are some impressive statistics in terms of the households that we do service. We also carry out twenty-one recycling rounds, eight food waste rounds, seven residual waste rounds and one isolated properties round with our crews in rotation. The total number of staff we have in this service is one hundred and fifty-two and we have fifty vehicles, which are required every day to operate the full service. Forty-eight of these vehicles are HGVs and I'm pleased to say that they're now operational using HVO fuel, which has a ninety-six percent lower carbon emission than standard Euro six diesel. We serviced nine hundred blocks of flats and inspected nine hundred blocks of flats for recycling and food waste collections. This has been a campaign for some time because we understand that it can be very problematic to live in a flat or a shared household and have the facilities available. Eighty-eight point three-three percent of our flats now have a full range of recycling and seventy-six percent receive a food waste collection. Ninety-seven percent of flats have either a partial or a full range of recycling and the cost of the collection service per household is less than one pound thirty-five per week, which I hope you'll agree with me is excellent value. Recycling performance last year was recycled and composted waste fifty-one point eight percent and approximately two hundred and thirty thousand curbside household collections are undertaken per week. And that's approximately fifty-seven thousand five hundred curbside household collections per day, given that it's a four-day week. The indoor market consists of twenty-one kiosks and a hundred and six stores and occupancy is currently at sixty-eight percent. We unfortunately did have some traders leave after Covid, but that was mainly due to them having businesses that couldn't really be updated in line with some of the modern online purchasing trends. And high, high-speed wifi is now available to assist those people who can diversify and some new traders are starting out, but the trading environment is challenging. The high street market continues to trade as normal, but there's a noticeable drop in footfall throughout the city centre as a whole, and this is of course upon which the traders rely. And a more widespread advertising and communications plan is being developed with our comms team to reach even more people through social media channels and target a younger and broader audience. Only one vaping vendor has been affected by the council's ban on the sale of vaping products in any of Chelmsford City Council-run premises. A quick update on shop mobility and the market road toilets. The shop mobility service is continuing to be well-used and usage continues to rise. Twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, between April and January of this year, we've had a total of three thousand one hundred and twenty-nine uses made of our service, which is to provide mobility scooters to people who may be less able to walk. Detailed figures are also available on request, should members wish to see them. We are, with regard to the toilets, we've made improvements there and we're currently developing a policy for accommodating people identifying as trans. This is causing some challenges, but unfortunately, these are mainly with other users' perceptions and beliefs. Forgive me, Chair, I lost a page and I'm conscious of time, so we'll... If we wish to pause and take questions or I can, I can continue with this in, in a couple of minutes, I just need to...
Are there any questions on the presentation so far? We have one from councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair.
Two actually, Chair, if you'll indulge me. The first one is regarding recent, a recent issue that arose in Uttlesford district area, which is very close to the area I represent, whereby the council lost its, or didn't lose it, it failed to gain its waste collection licence and as a result, bins filled rapidly and overflowed and caused a right old mess, I can tell you, in an area that surrounded my ward and neighbouring Chelmsford ward. I just wondered whether Chelmsford were at all affected by this, whether we went in to help or whether there was any activity to help collect the backlog in, in the Uttlesford district just across our border.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. I understand Mr Nicholson has some information about this.
Yeah, so the circumstance in Uttlesford was caused by the Uttlesford not having in place a transport manager, which meant that the traffic commissioners suspended their operators licence. Without an operator's licence, you can't put your vehicles on the, the road. It is a matter for Uttlesford, you can't really share transport managers because of the nature of the, the role. To give you some reassurance, in Chelmsford, we have four people who are appropriately qualified and experienced to undertake that role. And at the moment, Peter Masson, who's the operations manager, is the lead named person on our operator's licence. So it's unlikely that we get ourselves into the same position that Uttlesford did. They relied on one person, that person left in July last year and they failed to replace them in the designated time by the traffic commissioners. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mr Nicholson. That's most encouraging. Thank you. My second question related to the vaping motion and the fact I'm, I'm pleased to see that where we have direct control of, who provides market stalls or whatever, well, we have basically cleared that and there are no vaping, vaping stores. But in High Chelma Shopping Centre, an area that we do actually own as a council, is there not more influence we can bring to bear because there's one, two, if not three vaping stores in, in High Chelma?
Thank you again, councillor Wilson. I believe that's a leasehold, so Mr Nicholson can provide a bit more background for you on the, on the challenges we face.
So the very nature of the lease with the shopping centre means that the city council doesn't have that control, so there isn't any way that we could impose that policy. Obviously, you'll have heard subsequent to the council agreeing that motion, the government, you know, taken some measures, you know, to reduce certainly disposable vapes, so it's moving in the right direction, I'd suggest.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, I think you're ready to move on, are we?
I am. Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, just to Public Health and Protection Services, which is an incredibly wide-ranging and hard-working team, there have been challenges and they have risen to them this year. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of, of new initiatives. So we have in housing standards, the Home Upgrade Grant Phase Two, HUG Two, came forward in November twenty twenty-three and this is to help people who are in homes that are off gas grid, just improve, generally improve their resilience through insulation and, and other measures that are taken to reduce the cost of heating. We've got over twenty properties signed up at the moment and the online referral system is still being developed. We're going to follow up with some door knocking in person, that's proposed for the coming months, and we'll be visiting eligible properties to engage with people who have not responded to date to the sort of proactive letters that we sent out initially. If any councillors have people who, about whom they may be concerned and would like further advice, then Tegan Crick is our dedicated officer working on this project and I'm sure anyone in Public Health and Protection would guide you to the right person to speak to, should there be another matter. ASB and noise nuisance, we had around one thousand noise complaints and four hundred ASB complaints, which have been received and investigated by our service during twenty twenty-three. And with regard to food standards, there's one case of note, the food safety and health, sorry, a successful food safety prosecution of a takeaway food premises entitled The Canton Chef, you may know it, resulted in a thirteen thousand pound fine, including costs and the victim's surcharge, and we are going to be releasing some press on this very soon. Finally, just with regard to health and wellbeing and Chelmsford's food plan, that was approved at Cabinet in September twenty twenty-three. I'm very pleased to say that Jo Nogyogo is collating information now so she can populate our food map, which outlines dedicated areas where you can buy locally sourced produce, free-range eggs, healthier foods. She is working to get the food map onto our website on a dedicated health and wellbeing page soon. A couple of points of note for bereavement services. Chelmsford City Council is, as you all know, the burial and cremation authority for the whole district of Chelmsford. In twenty twenty-two, one thousand nine hundred and forty-four cremations were undertaken, thirty-eight burials took place in new graves and twenty-six burials took place in the existing reopened graves. Over the last five years, the average number of cremations undertaken per year was two thousand and ninety-two and the average number of burials in new graves was forty-seven and existing plots was thirty-seven. The level of use means that the current facilities are operating at close to capacity. However, lower levels of mortality nationally and Essex-wide show lower numbers generally since twenty twenty-two. I just wanted to outline as well some investment improvement work that's been undertaken in recent months. The Hoffman Memorial has been cleaned and new inscription plaques were provided back in August. The south chapels have been re-carpeted and new curtains have been installed, so that's completed in July the twenty twenty-three. And the memorial chapel seats in the north and south chapels were replaced in July twenty-three. The south chapel and the externally accessed cemetery toilets have been refurbished and were reopened in January. And this work also included work to the foul water sewage system and the lining of the underground pipe work. The capital works were costed and delivered on time and within budget. Apologies, Chair. I think, given the time, and there's a lot more to say, I just wanted to pass my thanks on to the community safety representatives and the police here this evening. I haven't touched upon their work because I know they will be outlining that in detail, but I'd just a huge thank you to the officers who involved in keeping us safe through the year. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for councillor Moore? Councillor Steele?
Yeah, thanks. Councillor Moore, it's about enforcement and it's about bylaws and I sort of half-know the answer because I've been talking to our legal department, but it's very confusing and I don't know which department it comes under in City Council. But we have lots of bylaws all over the city and it's difficult to find out who enforce them. When I speak to the police, the police say they don't enforce them. So I'd be interested to hear what their comment is at some point. For example, motorbikes riding across a recreation ground. The police say they don't, they, they won't follow it off the road. They don't enforce bylaws, bylaws on verges. I've been told by our legal department that actually the responsibility for enforcing bylaws sits with the organisation or local authority that took out the bylaw in the first place and in some cases that city council. But I don't think we've got the means to do it and it just makes me wonder whether we have a lot of bylaws that are just redundant and we ought to close down. But I just wonder what your comment on that is.
I think you've identified a gap, councillor Steele. It's not an area in which I have any level of knowledge, although I do share your frustration. Mr Nicholson, can you enlighten us?
Yeah, so as a general principle, and this is generally, there might be some very specific bylaws which we are enforcing, but generally bylaws nowadays are unenforceable and we rarely use a bylaw to enforce, you know, behaviour, basically because there's newer, yeah, more recent, yeah, antisocial behaviour, other legislation, other devices, community protection, warnings and notices and suchlike, which is a more effective way of doing it. To, to remove bylaws is quite a task, so I, I would suggest that most of the, the bylaws that exist will stay there, you know, effectively redundant. will stay there, effectively redundant. Very few of the parks and green spaces actually have any form of bylaw attached to them. Gallywood Commons got some bylaws, but they're 1880s or something vintage, you know, it's just, they're just unenforceable.
Very quickly, it's actually a virgin riddle which has got a bylaw and it's taken out by Chelmsford City Council, and of course, there's an expectation by the public that that should be enforced, but I think the process is you've actually got to take the person to magistrate's court, and it's obviously time-consuming and very expensive, so I understand the issue, but it is something I'm looking into, but thank you for the response.
Any other questions? Can I just ask one, please, councillor Moore? Who provides the funding for the home upgrade and installation?
It's in the form of government funding, so it's allocated for use in individual local authorities.
So this comes from the government and is distributed by Chelmsford City Council?
It's being administrated, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item nine, the annual presentation by the Safer Chelmsford Partnership and Essex Police. Thank you. What's the most suitable for the presenters? What? Are we good as we are? Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I've kept my presentation streamlined this evening because the two speakers after me, Mr Ballard and Mr Prophet, I didn't want to duplicate anything, so I'll try and be quite quick as I present and try not to duplicate anything. So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Spencer Clark, I'm the public protection manager at the city council, and I look after the strategic side of community safety, and I'm going to just give a quick overview of what we do, picking up some of the highlights. So what we do have, I'm just going to go through the statutory duties of a community safety partnership, and more importantly, to reinforce that I'm not presenting on behalf of the city council tonight, I'm presenting on behalf of the partnership. The partnership is the city council, the county council, Essex Police, Essex Fire and Rescue Services, our health providers, the Integated Care Board, and probationary services. So although most of my presentation will focus on the work of the city council, we can call other members of the group to scrutiny at any stage in the future. So our duty is under the Crime and Disorder Act 98, to form a partnership, to produce a strategic assessment each year based on the information which we're provided, agree priorities, develop a partnership plan and do the financial monitoring of that. So each year we look at the data, we also do what's called a crime risk matrix to look at the risks to each individual area. Just to give you a highlight of the top risks for Chelmsford this year, they were drelling burglary, trafficking of drugs, medium-risk domestic abuse, robbery, hate crime and vehicle crime. So we look at that data to help inform our priorities along with other data. So most of the strategic stuff we look at is done through the One Chelmsford Board. That board is much wider than just community safety partners, it also includes other partners such as the Retail Trade and Anglo-Ruskin, and the operational side of it is done through our community safety hub. Just picking up on some of our priorities which we look at, one of them being serious violence, I'm not going to mention it anymore because Mr Prophet is picking up on that. Preventing violent extremism, and I actually chair the Essex Group around Prevent, modern-day slavery, human trafficking, domestic homicide reviews, and the sort of community cohesion and safeguarding, they're just a few of the duties we do as a partnership. We also have what's called a Face the Public event, and each year we tend to combine that with the Police, Fire and Crime Commissioner, that will be in this very room on the 27th of February. So Mr Hurst and myself, and no doubt Mr Ballard, will be here to face the public, so if there's any questions around that. One of our other duties is to serve a public opinion, to see what, and for this year, really, really pleased that we took a collaborative approach and Safer Essex done this on our behalf. Also pleased to say that the best respondees across Essex were Chelmsford, with 18.8 of the responses coming from Chelmsford, so that's looking at that. And another duty we have to do is present to overview and scrutiny, which I am doing this evening. Just a little bit about what our current priorities are, and based on the data we have available to us at the moment, I would not see these changing drastically for the coming year, but again, that is for the One Chelmsford Board to decide early in March. So they're our current priorities around tackling violent crime and reducing re-offending, driving down antisocial behaviour in public places, identifying and supporting vulnerable people and tackling raw and environmental crime. A little bit about our structure, you see the last presentation spoke about Public Health and Protection Services, so the community safety team is based in there. We work in a community safety partnership hub, we're coming close to our five-year anniversary, so we've been co-located with Essex Police staff for nearly five years now, which is still going really well, and we have what we call fortnightly police tasking and monthly partnership tasking, where wider partners such as some of our providers, such as Open Road and our vetted social landlords, also attend that. That's enabled us to get improved partnership buying and much more better joint working opportunities and how we use our tools and powers. One of the really good things is our improved data, so for example, around serious violence, we get really rich data around that, particularly when we're looking at hotspots for antisocial behaviour as well. Continue to have good forums, so meet regularly with schools, social landlords around rough sleeping and mental health, and really good engagement across the whole of Essex on a strategic level. So whether that's Safer Essex, which I'm currently vice-chair of, or many of the numerous partnership boards, such as the Violence and Wrongability Operations Board, which Mr Prophet chairs, so really good relationships around that. When you look at funding streams, so we have the city council budget, which employs the staff and the projects and around CCTV, and we also get core funding from the police commissioner each year. Also includes crime prevention funds, which I think is opening any day now for agencies and voluntary groups and charities to apply for, and this year we've been very successful with our Safer Streets Fund, and I'll say a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. Also to flag up on some of the other areas, things like the late-night levy, which helps fund our SOS bus, some of the public health funding which we receive, which also goes towards that initiative, and this year we've also had Op-Dial, again, I will not repeat that because Mr Prophet will be picking up on that area. Also, other works we've done is around Minerva Funding, which is around female victimisation and effective use of the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, where we're working with Essex Police and The Bid to get a retail crime officer in to help doing some of the work around business crime. Just a little bit on some of our key projects, as I said, been really lucky this year with some of the funding we've got around safer streets, and thanks to the police commissioner's office, we're looking at a number of projects for this current financial year and next year. We also received some funding from the Essex Violence Reduction Unit, where again, we've done lots of work in the community, supporting young people. Operation Dial, which is the hotspot policing, which we've been focusing on Molsham Street, we're currently in the process of looking at the Op-Dial zones for next year, and I think partnerships will have a lot more input into where these zones will be this year, and whether we can look at changing zones and the policing and patrolling of such zones at certain times of the year would also be helpful. Two projects which have really come to light, which were launched last year, which I spoke about, is the Chelmsford Against Slavery Partnership and the Chelmsford Women's Safety in a City Project. We continue to do quite a bit of work around education and awareness, things like community engagement, so this year we've done our 999 Day in South Wodham, and some of the communications work we do, such as Crucial Crew, the work we've done with Chelmsford College, the On Your Team project, we had the launch of a cybercrime initiative last week in this very room, and also the work we do around safeguarding and domestic abuse. Chelmsford has a very vibrant night-time economy, a lot of our funding goes towards some of those interventions, funding projects like street pastors, taxi marshals, the SOS bus, the work we're doing around safe spaces and drink spiking awareness. I will flag up, pardon the pun, purple flag. Press release went out a few hours ago for Chelmsford, we've maintained or retained purple flag for the 11th year running, and the assessors were very, very pleased with what they saw, lots of really good initiatives, and I urge you to read the City Life article on purple flag, which came out today. And one of the other new initiatives, which started only a few weeks ago, is the Department for Transport, funded transport safety offices, so they'll be covering six areas across Essex, they will be patrolling the rail network, but more importantly for Chelmsford and Basiden, they'll be patrolling the bus station, and they'll be accredited officers with powers. So within the next few weeks, they'll be able to use their powers in the area. Just a little bit on violence and wrongability, and again, I'm not going to duplicate anything because I know this has been picked up in some of the other reports, a lot of our work goes around tackling local organised crime groups, a lot of the policing operations and some of the other operations which we do, like risking the community, where we do work around making young people safer, who may be at risk of exploitation, and then some of the other works we do is around things like mentoring, football and music projects. This year, we were provided funding to do some work with Chelmsford College, done a really effective week of action with Chelmsford College, the catchment for Chelmsford College goes way beyond Chelmsford District, and whilst we focused on things like knife crime or what to do in the incident of such things, or drugs and alcohol, it was really pleasing to see that the college was also linking in with things like recycling, upcycling and climate anxiety, which is really important to young people, so it really sort of linked in quite well with a lot of the works we were doing. We also do a lot of work with some of our suppliers, like Reach Every Generation, the Building Lives Project, and again, this year we delivered Crucial Crew to almost every Year Six group, and it's important we tackle Year Six because it's a year of transition up to Year Seven before they hit secondary school. Again, I said I'd say a little bit about the Safer Streets Fund, there's lots and lots of different projects there, not all up in front of you here. The graphic you see on the side there is probably one of the most exciting projects I've been working on in the last year, because I usually get, tend to be more focused on targeting crime, and this is working for a charity called Make Space for Girls, and it's about making our green spaces safer and more inclusive for young people. So tomorrow I've got my last session with a group of 12 Year Nine students at the Boswell School, and you'll see from the little maps we've got there, our area of focus is Central Park, and the information and the ideas we're getting back from those young people are absolutely superb, and we will be doing a debrief session in this very room where the young people can actually explain their ideas to us, and most, anyone can come along to that session, we encourage you to do so because they're a really bright, vibrant group of young people, and the charity we're working with, who are sort of linked with the London School of Economics, are coming up with some great ideas. Other projects we've been dealing with, put CCTV in an underpass at the bottom of First Avenue, Bishop's Wall Lane, we're working on an active bystander awareness for education, again, with young people, and then there's a few specific projects we're working around, like the cathedral grounds where we're putting in new benches, and the works at Hawkes Wood Road and Hornbeam Gardens, where we're doing some works in the near future. Just to say a little bit about the Women's Safety Project, we've been running that for about eighteen months now, that's the graphic for it, you'll see that there's a lot of collaboration with The Bid around this, developed a brand book and video campaign together with visual assets and social media campaign. It's about training places to become a safe space. Video Two, for those of you who saw Video One, which came out about a year ago, Video Two, I'd say its introduction's almost complete, and this will be focusing on bystander awareness. We've got about forty businesses signed up at the moment, it's a bit more about quality rather than quantity at the moment, because we've got some really big providers signed up to this project, and some really encouraging work, which is being done as a result of the training at some of the very big organisations in Chelmsford, whether they're retail or sporting organisations. And what's been really good about this project, we were probably the first in Essex to launch this, and now there's five Essex councils funded by the Essex PFCC or the Home Office to deliver something very, very similar based on the work we've done, so it's been a sort of a blueprint for Essex. My final slide is a little bit around horizon scanning. Again, I'm not going to say much about the serious violence duty, but it's a new duty for us now. We're also expecting detailed guidance on the protect duty around springtime, which is Martin's Law, and this is the outcomes of the Manchester bombing. The prevent duty's just been for a refresh, but we expect Home Office face-to-face training to return in spring. We've also gone through a legislative review of the community safety partnerships with Safer Essex, it's been really important. Couple of things which are coming in next year will be the offences, weapons, homicide reviews, and Victims and Prisoners Bill will also be coming in. There was some consultation last year by the Home Office on antisocial behaviour powers, I should imagine they will also be coming in this year at some stage, but I don't know what time. But, and then finally, much as I don't like to mention the pandemic, we are still dealing with the longer-term impact of the pandemic, particularly around mental health and young people and their parents and carers, and some of the work we're doing around domestic abuse, and some of the, a lot of the work we're looking at is around also radicalisation and online exploitation, which have come to a bit of a head during the pandemic. So that, I believe, is all I'm going to say without duplicating anything further on this evening, so.
Thank you very much, an incredibly full programme of work covering all sorts of things. Are there any questions? Councillor Steele?
Thank you. Yeah, I was surprised to see CCTV in the avenues, but you're telling me it's the play area at the end of the avenue, or is it actually in the avenues? On slide eight you've got.
It's actually in a pedestrian underpass.
Right, so how does that work? I mean, I know it's monitored from here, is it a call-out that the CCTV operators can do, or is it the collection of evidence? How does it actually result in a reduction of incidents or the prosecution?
So the system we've installed at Bishop's Wall Underpass is following fears of crime, particularly from women using that area. The police commissioner's office gave us the opportunity to fund that area, so it's recorded 24/7, so it's just like it's an addition to the city centre system. If we see something happening, we will contact the police. Hopefully, it will reduce people's fear of crime in the area, because whilst there's a high fear of crime, when you look at actual incidents, it's not that high. The works we've done for Safer Streets Free around Chelmer Valley Nature Reserve reduced crime in that area by around about 21%. So people are less likely to commit a crime if there's CCTV there, but more importantly, the public will feel safer using that area.
So it's more of a deterrent than it is an actual call-out or response?
Yes, and it's in a pedestrian underpass and not Yes, and it, and it's in a pedestrian underpass and not a residential area. Because we always, if we're looking at putting CCTV in residential areas, there's lots of privacy issues. And we have to do quite a robust privacy impact assessment for that. So using them in parks and underpasses and city centre applications, that's what we tend to do.
Councillor Deakin, I think you also indicated you had a question.
Yeah, thank you. The Central Park project, can you ensure that all councillors are advised when you do have that meeting and the presentation here in the, in the council chamber? Thank you.
Yes, most certainly councillor Deakin.
I think I saw somebody else. Was there anybody else who had a question?
Thank you Chair. Through you, I just wanted to, to ask, really following on from councillor Steele's question about CCTV. You say that the reason for the installation of CCTV in that area was due to the fear of crime, which seems, to be honest, quite a promisingly low bar if there only has to be a fear of crime for action to be taken. I think that could potentially get residents' hopes up in other areas as well. I don't know whether he is aware of, in my ward in Mulsham Lodge, issues around Chislet Row, where very sadly there was, there was a murder just over a year ago. And whether he's aware of any plans that might be afoot to help reduce the fear of crime, which has come as a very understandable long term after effect of that tragic event?
Yes councillor, I'm aware of the issues in that area. Again, I'll go back to my point about privacy impact assessments. We do have some deployable units which we have used in some areas. One location we're using that at the moment is a footpath in the area of Maltese Road, where we've installed CCTV there. If we're looking at deployable units, we usually need an asset to put them on, such as an Essex County Council streetlight. They don't, they won't allow us to put it on any longer than that. But again, if it's going in or close to a residential area, we have to have a very robust privacy impact assessment. For example, if we were looking to put a new standalone camera permanent in an area like the footways at the rear of the avenues. Whilst some residents might welcome a CCTV camera, others might not. So for example, if they want to sell their house in years to come, it may have an impact on the cost of their house going forward. So we, we have to do things properly and we have to do appropriate consultation. So a loc, a location such as Chislet Row would probably benefit from one of the deployable units for a short term measure. But we are also looking at other things we can do, like regular patrols, working closely with our partners to reduce that. But I can see how your residents would be impacted on an instance such as that. Similarly, the, one of the reasons behind the avenues is following a, a serious sexual assault which happened about a year ago. And that can have a really big impact on, on the, on the public. So it's important that we reassure the public by using such effective measures.
I think we have one more question.
Yeah, apologies for a late question. Can I ask Spencer about community protection warnings and notices, which Keith mentioned earlier, I think? And can you say something about how well you think they're working? And whether we, whether there are ways in which we could improve the way they work? Because in practice, it seems to be quite difficult to, to use them to get to the result that, that the residents want to see, which is the person who's been issued with the warning either stops behaving badly or is removed from the locality.
Yeah, so they can be a very effective tool. We have to go through the process we have available to us. So let's use your community protection warning, followed by a community protection notice. And then it can go to a criminal behaviour order, which then upon breach, you can be arrested for. I'm not going to say anything more on community protection CBOs, because Mr Ballard and Mr Prophet will be talking about those later on today. They can be effective. I can understand frustrations. But we can only do what we have with the legislation available to us. As I mentioned earlier, there will be changes to that legislation in the coming months. I don't know how long that will be. That will be things like increasing fines for community protection notice from £100 to £500. Disbursement powers will increase from 48 hours to 72 hours, similarly with reclosures. And community protection notices will lower from the current age of 16 years old to 10. So there's lots of work going on to make these powers more effective in the coming months, hopefully. We, we obviously have to take a judgement on each particular case. And sometimes working with registered social landlords or working with the police can be equally as effective. So, you know, it's, they, they usually work quite well. But if people don't apply by the rules, they will get escalated to either a notice or a criminal behaviour order eventually. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on now to item 10, presentation on Essex Violence and Vulnerability Unit.
Thank you Chair, councillors, colleagues, good evening. My name is Andy Prophet. My day job is the Deputy Chief Constable with Essex Police. The Violence and Vulnerability Unit, I'm the Chair of the Operations Board of this unit. Now I've got lots of slides here and I might dance around them a little bit. But the purpose of this partnership is effectively to tackle serious violence in the county. Essex is one of 18 areas nationally that's got central funding. Funding from the Commissioner, funding from Essex County Council to tackle serious violence. And the kind of key measures are set out there for you, kind of hospital admissions where knives are used to injure people. Non domestic abuse homicide and other knife violence being the kind of key target measures that we're seeking to, to reduce through that partnership. And it's a long term preventative strategy. In Essex, this partnership's been in existence for about its fifth year now. The approach there across those five themes that you can see, really it's to engage with communities, engage with young people, engage with people who might be at risk of becoming subject to serious violence, to understand what do communities tell us? To really target interventions where it makes a difference. To develop professional skills within the police, within the council, within the youth service, within other agencies who might be able to intervene and make a difference. To raise awareness amongst the public and amongst communities and to really make sure we've got the right data to use it. So that's the strategy that we're seeking to address this through. And of course, it's part of a wider system. I will talk to you about Chelmsford in a minute, I promise you. It's part of a wider system, of course, of how we operate and how we prevent, prevent crime and harm. So what is it? Well, the unit is a small group of people based here in the Community Safety Partnership hub that Spencer's mentioned. And the work they are doing, that team of about seven or eight people with an analyst, with a commissioning manager, is to coordinate activity around the whole of the county, including South End and Thorrock and here in Chelmsford, to make sure that the approaches to prevent serious violence are really effective. So that's including things like targeted youth work, outreach work, talking to young people, talking to youth groups about what they feel is happening in Essex and around Chelmsford. And then to have really focused interventions at individuals who might be at risk. Children, young people from troubled families, maybe who haven't got, you know, significant parenting provision or maybe are out on the streets more than they should be. So the support wrap around those type of vulnerable individuals. And then interventions around people becoming involved in risky activities potentially connected to serious violence. So what does that mean? For example, individuals released under bail or under investigation who've got involved in drug dealing. Because we know that's a really significant driver of, of serious violence. And we know that quite often the individuals who are drawn into that can themselves be victims of, of criminalisation and, and similar activity. And across the year, we're, you know, significantly talking to, you look at the numbers there. Nearly 50,000 individuals have been engaged with last year around some of those interventions that we're talking about. And that's going up and up and up and we want to do more and more of that. Why do we do this? Because it's this preventative work, this working around the edges of the violence that academic studies say is, is just as important at prevention as traditional police work. By the way, the police work is still happening. Last year in Chelmsford, 162 people were charged with supplying controlled drugs, 130 the year before. So the traditional stuff is still happening. It's not all soft and fluffy. The hard enforcement is happening, but the prevention, the partnership, the long term work has to sit behind it. Just some, some practical examples of things and Spencer's talks them that are, that are happening in and around Chelmsford. And I won't, I won't read them out to you, but you know, there are dozens of cases of young people in Chelmsford being directly targeted and supported to break them out of their risky and offending behaviour. And you will only see that increase, work around use of CCTV, work in schools and colleges, work in partic, in particular communities to really tackle problems where they exist. The heart of this partnership is a fund that local community safety managers and others can apply to each year. So I know Spencer and others around Chelmsford keep us really busy saying, how can they draw money into, into prevention work in Chelmsford? A key part of the strand, there's a brilliant video here, I won't play it now, it's about six and a half minutes if you've not seen it on that link there. That's one of the kind of tools that we're using to engage with families, parents, schools and colleges around the risks of county lines, drug dealing and the vulnerability and the harm that surrounds that. And it's really pitched at connecting with people and families. And, you know, thousands of, thousands of views of that video, it is an absolutely fantastic tool. It's much, much better than me going and boring people talking about this stuff. It's directly aimed at targeting professionally produced at those that, that most need to hear some of the risks that are involved in some of the dangerous behaviours. Well, well, well worth a watch. Spencer mentioned the serious violence duty, or what's that? Statement of the blindingly obvious, you might say. We should be sharing data, police, councils, education, health. And we are more than we ever have to understand the problems that are happening in Chelmsford and around the county. And again, as Spencer mentioned, we've got such incredible, absolutely fantastic team there. And, you know, if you've got any specific questions, I'm more than happy to fill them. But Sam really is your resident expert there and I know he'll be very happy for you to reach out if you, if you want to. Just two or three more slides and then very happy to take any questions. Just some examples of teams have been doing in Chelmsford. This was probably in the run up to Christmas when we produced these slides, but more and more use of the knife arch, trying to get out there. Why? Obviously to take knives off the street, to deter those who might be tempted to carry knives in busy places, at the, at the train station and other places are really a key part of it. Getting out into the schools and colleges, educating, talking to, to young people who might be tempted to carry a knife or, or for their own protection and those sorts of issues that we know that can, can happen. And, and really, really increase the danger that people are putting themselves at. Are we prosecuting people for bad things in Chelmsford? Yes, I'm sure you'll say not, not enough and I'd probably agree with you. But you know, lots of cases in the run up to Christmas in recent months where through the targeting of known offenders, through Paul and his team, we have been taking out people for robbery. And some more cases on the next slide, vehicle crime and burglary. They are on our focus as a policing response to this and that wider partnership. To deal with the crimes that your residents will be telling you are important. And that, you know, significant amount of focus will continue to go into that because we know how important it is. And again, there's some, some examples up there in the run up to Christmas of some, some, some good results. Very much at the heart of this is folks. Very much at the heart of this is focusing on the individuals we know in the local area are causing the harm. So that persistent offender approach that you can see there. That, this is where the powers come in, the community protection warnings, the community protection notices, the CBOs. The team here are really proactive with that. They will continue to be proactive with that. They will continue to want to gather information, intelligence if they aren't targeting the right people. That's a key, key thing you can do to help Paul and the team. But they're being really positively used. I think one of the strengths of the partnership we've got here is you have got so many agencies coming together, talking together to make, to try and make a positive difference in the, in the city centre. And that, that will very much continue. Through the autumn, you can see there 200, I'm testing my eyes there, I think it says 248 offences in, up into that period there, arrests, sorry, for, for a variety of offences. The team are trying to be really, really positive in this space to make, to make a really significant difference. So that was just to give you a sense of the fact that the, the crime fighting is happening as well. But the partnership, the Violence and Vulnerability Unit is doing the prevention work around the edges to try and really help people get out of those dangerous behaviours because we know that, we know that works from lots of academic studies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we have covered the public question in relation to that because we can't deal with an individual case. But I think we covered the prevention, the actual prosecution and obviously the attendance at things where that's going to happen. So I hope that satisfies what is going on in the background. Individual response times etcetera, things need to be dealt with separately. Are there any other questions? I'll go first.
Thank you Chair. Can I pick up on the, the queue there about not doing enough in Chelmsford? Can I just say a few thank yous to start with? Because the partnership is great, so thank you for working together and participating in that. Because we clearly get benefit from that. Thank you also, I, I want to name check Inspector Sam Gerdlestone for the work that he's done over the last year. Because I think we all think that, that he's been great. So we fear that he's going to be promoted next week and we'll lose him. But we'd like to hang on to him for as long as possible, please. I also want to endorse what you're saying about your strategy of prevention as far as possible. Discourage people from committing crime because that's better than responding when there's been crime. So I, I don't want to knock any of that. But I do want to pick up on what you said about you are dealing with sort of burglaries, car theft, sort of minor drug offences and things like that, but we'd like you to do more. Yes, we would like you to do more. And if you look at the crime statistics, then I think Essex Police is really pretty effective at responding to serious crime. Sadly, there's been another murder recently. You're very effective actually at solving murders and bringing people to court for them. But when it comes to the sort of crimes that Chen was talking about earlier, the sort of petty thefts of bicycles and car related crime, burglaries, that sort of thing. The rate at which you're actually clearing those up is frankly abysmally low, isn't it? And as I say, I'm not saying that to criticise you because you've got a certain amount of resources. And I can see that the way you're choosing to deploy the resources makes sense to me. But the, the question really is how much more resource would you need in order to be able to bring your work in, in solving those lesser crimes up to what most of the public would regard as an acceptable level? How big is the resourcing gap from your perspective?
It's a great, it's a great question. You're right in your analysis, of course. If you look at Chelmsford data and Essex data, violence and serious crime over five, 10 years has been coming down quite pleasingly. Since, since Covid over the last two or three, some of the more traditional acquisitive crime, vehicle crime, sadly over the last 12 months in Chelmsford, house burglary have increased. And that's never okay and not all right. The strategy continues to be prevention. We're not going to shift away from the serious violence that happens in the homes. 30,000 crimes a year, about two thirds of our violent crime is domestic abuse in the home. So we're going to continue to keep investing in that area. The vehicle crime response, there's going to be a tailored response for Chelmsford to make sure that we understand, and we do understand, who the local offenders are who are causing issues around vehicle crime. What the travelling criminality look like, looks like, because we see quite a bit of offenders coming in from out of, out of the county, not always London, but that area. or that area, with organised kind of theft around high-value vehicles, Range Rovers, Fiesta's. So there's a lot of work working with other forces to target organised criminality that's driving a lot of the vehicle crime offences. How many more people would we need to solve it? I think this is almost an impossible answer. What I can say is that, you know, working with the Chief Constable, working in the Police and Crime Commission, we're working really hard to make good use of the money we've got. More's always welcome, we've had good growth over the last five or 10 years, but have we got enough to tackle everything to the extent that I would like and more importantly the residents of Chelmsford would like? No, but we're trying to make the right decisions around prevention and around balancing up the resources we've got, just as councils have to do, to make the best use of what we've got available to us.
Can I just come back? That's basically a diplomatic politician's response, isn't it? Not saying how much you need, but you're not denying that in order to achieve a higher rate of solving those crimes like burglary, which I forget whether it was five per cent or lower than five per cent, but it's abysmally low, in order to get that up to even 20 per cent would require a significant increase in your resourcing so that you had more policemen available to go and investigate them. I think that's undoubtedly true, isn't it?
Of course it's true. Yeah, we've got three thousand eight hundred police officers, two thousand members of staff. Essex is the biggest it has ever been, that's a statement of truth. We make choices, you know, and I'm significantly responsible for that, about where we put those people. If I was to take a chunk of officers away from dealing with domestic abuse as an example and put them into burglary investigation, we would probably solve more burglaries. But we have to make some difficult choices about where the most harm is happening and what the right strategy to approach is. So prevention is definitely the target, and where we get specific information around burglary and burglary offenders, that's the approach we're taking. If we had another 200 officers, I'd love to put them into it, but I've got to deal with what I've got.
I think we'll stop it there because, I mean, the truth of it is, everyone, if they had more people, could do a better job and get more investigations, though. Thank you for your question. I am conscious that councillor Steele has a question, but I just wondered if there's anyone else before I go to councillor Steele.
Thank you. Can I just pick up on CBOs? Something new to me, I haven't seen that before. Representing Aurora area, most of our crime is ASB, kind of low-level stuff, and by the time we get to prosecution of the culprits, they're a long way down the road. And the CBO, from what I've read on your slide, can only be applied if they've already been prosecuted, is that what you said, I think, is available on conviction for any criminal offence. So how does that work then to improve the situation? Because if they're already convicted, aren't they under conditions anyway, you know, whatever sentence they've got? How does a CBO then improve the situation? And when you say it includes requirements to address the underlying causes, what do you mean? Because it's in my experience of some characters in our area, as I say, they're a long way down the route, and all you're doing is applying more and more of this, but they're kind of past that point and it's not having much of an impact. Does it actually work?
Yes, it does. Criminal behaviour order is the outcome of kind of an escalating approach. You start with a warning, stop doing that, you know, whatever that might be, stop drinking in the street, stop aggressively begging. An individual doesn't engage with that simple instruction, they get a notice written by the officer, stop doing that or you'll be going to court. And then the next stage, if they continue to do that, is the criminal behaviour order that the court issues and can then put controlling requirements on that individual, which if they then breach, become an arrestable offence. And so it's an escalating approach. What we find is that the notice starts to really control the behaviour, and it's only the most persistent and difficult people, some of whom I've referenced on the previous slide, require the criminal behaviour order. So it's that kind of escalating approach. And as Spencer said earlier, part of the consultation the government has done centrally that will be coming through in the Criminal Justice Act in the autumn this year is to toughen up some of the middle ground options around the notices, increasing the options for higher-level fines, which hopefully will be a deterrent for some, and increasing the age range at which those notices can be potentially issued.
If I can just come back. So does the speed of the courts, is that a factor here? Because you're talking about an escalation, but an escalation that's spread over too long a time is less effective. Are you hampered by the speed of the court?
Yes. We have, you know, individuals are charged for serious offences and it takes far too long to get to court, a year, two years sometimes for the most serious matters. Obviously, we manage as best we can to control their behaviours, but the delays in the court system is a significant challenge. A focus through the Criminal Justice Board chaired by the Commissioner, working with the judiciary to try and resolve that, but it's a problem in Essex, it's a problem nationally, and it hampers fighting crime.
Okay, are there any other questions? If we can keep it fairly sure.
Quick question. Can I ask a slightly different question, but related to the question of crime statistics that I mentioned earlier? Some of my residents have pointed out that there have been a number of reports of various crimes that they know have been put in in their area, but they don't seem to show up on the police statistics of, you know, location-based crimes. And I was wondering whether you can help us to understand what the difference is? What is it that those public reports of where crimes have been reported are reporting? What's included and what's excluded?
So a great question. Every single call is logged into Essex Police, be that on the phone or through other means, and recorded. If there's specific examples where you've got a resident who says, I reported this and it hasn't come through on the crime stats, myself, Paul, will want to know because we should be recording 100% of the things that are reported to us either as an incident or a crime. No negotiation about that, 100% of the stuff should be recorded. So we don't kind of say, that's not serious enough, filter it out, put it in a corner, absolutely not.
So we'll follow up offline? Yeah, thank you.
Just a very quick one. I represent Great Baddo. There's been some incidents of serious violence there. I take it the vast predominance of the serious violence you see, there's pre-existing relationships between the suspect and the victim, it's not indiscriminate. It's usually domestic or drugs-related or something like that where they know each other, correct?
Domestic abuse, drugs, knife crime, organised criminality, mental health are the primary drivers of serious violence, yeah.
Are there any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move on, and thank you very much for a very interesting input. It's a huge amount of work going on in the background. Thank you. So we're on to item 11, the presentation of the Essex Council.
Chief Inspector Bartlett also has a separate presentation. He used to be under the item nine.
Item nine?
Can we have the presentation?
You want to do that now? Right. Okay, I correct that. Apparently there's a presentation under item nine that's yet to be done, so I'll hand over to that now.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Paul Ballard, I'm the Chief Inspector for Chelmsford and Maldon District for Essex Police, and I'll be given a bit of a further presentation around some of the policing activity and some of the priorities for your police teams here in Chelmsford. I will say here that there's been some coordination on our part with the previous presentation by Mr. Prophet, just to avoid any duplication, just so you get a fuller picture about some of the work that's been going on. So that's obviously who I am, I am the Chief Inspector for Chelmsford as well as Maldon. Within the district, there are a number of police bases, but the main ones are obviously at Chelmsford, in the main city centre police station where we've got responsibility for the local policing response teams. And additionally, we've got the Chelmsford and Maldon Community Policing Team that are based out of the Community Safety Hub at the City Council, which includes the Town Centre team, and then I've got supplementary, a further team over at Maldon, both response teams and the Community Policing Team. But the wider policing family, that's just the teams that come under me from jurisdiction perspective. We've also got CID, domestic abuse teams, and various other investigative teams that work out of Chelmsford and are based here, but we've also got that wider police family from roads policing, firearms, various different other teams within Essex Police that also patrol and work within Chelmsford to keep the city safe. Just on this one then, so in general terms, this is the force plan for Essex Police. It's a relatively straightforward slide, I will take you through it ever so slightly in the main points, and that is that the three C axes are to help people, obviously keep people safe and to catch criminals, with the main efforts around victims, violence, vulnerability and visibility. In general, our priorities are those offences that are listed in the middle of the circle there, with the main drive around ensuring that we prevent, respond appropriately and accordingly in regards to any requests for our service and crime, and investigate to the right degree and ensure that we conduct a full and proportionate investigation in regards to incidents of antisocial behaviour and crime that are recorded to us. I won't list all of the crimes there that are identified in the middle of the circle, but of course, happy to take any questions afterwards in relation to those. In addition to the force plan, obviously we are very much linked in with the PFCC's office and the PFCC's policing priorities to get crime down. There's a significant overlay, as you would imagine, in relation to the PFCC's priorities and the Chief Constable's force plan. I won't go through those in detail, you can see those there, the 12, and as I say, they're predominantly the same or similar themed, which you would expect. In relation to Chelmsford specifically then, so this is not an exhaustive list, I'd like to point out, this is, obviously you can't put too many words on one PowerPoint slide, but this is just in general terms, some of the more key things that we are doing in Chelmsford in order to deliver and apply on those priorities. So obviously more officers, that Mr. Prophet's already mentioned that we are the largest that we have ever been, Chelmsford is representative of that, and that recruitment continues in so much as we are retaining and maintaining our numbers, which is positive. In relation to antisocial behaviour, we'll come on to the crime statistics and antisocial behaviour statistics in a little bit in a couple of slides, but obviously we continue to risk assess, grade and respond appropriately to all forms of antisocial behaviour that are reported to us. And then we've got the Chelmsford Town Centre team, supported by other departments from both inside Chelmsford and outside, continuing to tackle theft, retail crime and other associated criminality in the city centre at Chelmsford, which has provided a positive response. Working very closely with our partners within the Community Safety Partnership and other charitable sector in relation to reducing homelessness, and then regular operations in and around Chelmsford, targeting antisocial behaviour, vehicle use and speeding. In addition to that, obviously Mr. Prophet's already mentioned some of the Knife Arch events that we've held at local schools, colleges and universities, and we also engage very regularly with local primary, secondary schools, along with colleges and youth clubs in order to, you know, increase our engagement and offer support to children and young adults. So we'll come on to some of the more Chelmsford-specific performance data in a second, but just to give you a bit of an overview, so in the rolling 12 months compared to the 12 months the same period of last year, crime is up in Chelmsford by 3.1%. We have seen a reduction in antisocial behaviour reporting, which is down 36.8, and we have also seen a reduction in vehicle, sorry, cycle theft in the city centre of a 10% and some change drop in the last 12 months. Additionally, violent offences, particularly those with injury, have decreased in the last year, which is all positive. There are some areas of concern, of course there are, there are things that we are obviously continuing to prioritise and to target, which Mr. Prophet has mentioned, and I know has come up already in some of the questions this evening, and that relates to vehicle theft, which has been rising in Chelmsford in the last couple of months, albeit that has stabilised in the January data, which I accept you haven't seen as it's not formed in part of this presentation, and then the increase in shoplifting and dwelling burglaries, as has been previously discussed. So in relation to all of the crime, I appreciate that's a very busy slide, and it is some distance from some of you, so you may not be able to see the specific statistics there. I have gone through some of the overarching areas of note in regards to the statistics as they stand out. Obviously, from a positive perspective, antisocial behaviour, criminal damage and other theft is reducing along with stalking and harassment offences and sexual offences in general, along with violence with injury. However, there is still an overarching overall increase as of December last year, with some increases in inquisitive crime, inclusive of burglary and vehicle crime and shoplifting. Next, to give you a bit of an explanation around this, because some of you may not see this previously, as part of our performance as a district, Essex Police employs a private company to conduct public surveys in relation to how the public feel about Essex Police and the service that they receive. It's all very much done with a representative group, so we can be comfortable with the statistics and the numbers that are provided. And you'll see there a quite a significant period of time in relation to the data that's been provided. So it's provided quarterly, this is the data up to September 23, we are due some new data soon, but you'll see that there are specific questions, and then the responses are given a percentage, and you can see the trend there. The overwhelming trend for the majority of these is that there was an increase in public confidence, and in general terms nationally, not just within Essex during the Covid period. There has been some minor reductions in some areas following that, however, I would like to point out that Essex Police still remains one of the most highly surveyed and one of the most highest percentages when it comes to these questions of the forces within England. And Chelmsford as a district actually is quite representative of those force figures, and we are above or at the average for the force in all but one measure, which I appreciate isn't on the slide, but to provide you with that context. You can see the questions there, I won't go through each and every single one because obviously I appreciate you can see them, but you can see that the general percentages and the trends for those. And then the second one, you'll see there. Of course, they're all very important, and I'm certainly not going to cherry pick because that would be unfair, but for me personally, obviously those first two, confidence in receiving a good service is at 70%, and the police are doing a good or excellent job is at 77. So as I say, always look to strive to do more and to improve and get better, but within Chelmsford, as it stands, we are generally in a reasonable position in comparison to our other districts within Essex and the force as an average. Just a little bit more specifically, and I know he's been named already, and I'll tell him later, and he'll very much be glad that he's been name dropped tonight. The community policing team is made up of Inspector Sam Gerdlestone, who sits directly and works alongside me, then we've got our three community policing sergeants, one of which is the Town Centre Team Sergeant, and each CPT shift has nine PCs and between two to four PCSOs, it's getting changed depending on various different patterns. And then the Chelmsford Town Team, which is obviously with Graham Thomas, the Sergeant, and is establishment of eight PCs and three PCSOs. Chelmsford also has an additional Community Safety Engagement Officer, and there are further officers attached as well with children and young persons officers, but they are shared between both districts. So just to go into some of the detail then, so as I say, there was some coordination because this is, again, not an exhaustive list, but what I didn't want to do was provide the same information that Mr. Prophet provided around some of the good work that's been ongoing in the district in the last 12 months. However, and it genuinely wasn't by design that there's also a photograph of Mr. Prophet on patrol in this one. So there was a report, and the continued reports and concerns around a rise in antisocial behaviour and associated criminality in the city centre bus station area, and then subsequently the train station area, that we, along with our colleagues from the Community Safety Partnership and the City Council, put on significant amount of resource and specialist operations in order to try and disrupt, which included search warrants with our colleagues within OP Raptor, within policing who are our county line specialists, disruption of those county lines, which led to the sentences of two leading drug dealers, which were causing issues in the area, various dispersal orders and use of the Public Order Act, as well as the Crime and Antisocial Behaviour Act in order to utilise legislation, and working with British Transport Police. So again, I can't stress enough some of the work that's been ongoing in relation to some of the work that we do in and around, not just the city centre, but that is work that can be and has been replicated in other areas of the city. that can be and has been replicated in other areas of the city where there's been issues identified to us. And then we come on to vehicle crime, I know that Mr Prof has touched upon it, but just to reiterate that this is a significant local priority for not just Chelmsford, but it is also a priority for Essex Police under OP Ignition, which I'm sure you would hopefully have seen some recent media communications around some high-value vehicles that were found and located by Essex Police Officers and returned to owners, and that's just indicative of some of the work that's ongoing, not just within Chelmsford, but within the force. We continue to work particularly hard in regards to this, and I've been identifying various different trends and crime patterns throughout the calendar year, inclusive of a theft from motor vehicle crime trend in Chelmsford Village in and around sort of May and April last year, and then the more recent ones in and around sort of the Mulsham Bado areas in regards to vehicle thefts. I would like to point out that actually, for theft of motor vehicle, we are, whilst above this time last year, our solve rate in response to the council is actually improving as well in Chelmsford, and the Chelmsford-specific solve rate for theft of motor vehicle is higher than the force average. Again, I'm not suggesting it's where we would like it to be, but we are moving in the right direction in relation to that. And then theft of pedal cycle, so one of the challenges that we have found is that some of the fantastic work that we've done with our community safety partners and the British Transport Police in the city centre to actually reduce the theft of pedal cycle by 10% over the 12 months, has had the knock-on effect that our, the individuals that were committing those crimes have moved to an alternative method, which is the theft of pedal cycles from associated sheds and garages. So we are obviously flexible enough to identify now that we are aware of it, and we are changing our strategy, but we are comfortable in respect of the work that's been done in the city centre and and around the train station because of the crime prevention measures that have been put in place, inclusive of the CCTV that was put in by the CSP, and the work that we do with British Transport Police that we shouldn't see, hopefully, a return to that type of criminality in the city centre. But just to put a little bit of context, you know, some really fantastic work in the city centre, which remains low, but there has been some challenges as a result of the change in criminality around it. And then I know that Spencer's mentioned this previously, but I just didn't feel it right not to mention some of the fantastic work that we do alongside the CSP, who lead on the Women's Safety Charter around violence against women and girls, not just inclusive of the Women's Safety Charter that we, you know, have in Chelmsford, that we are a strong partner of, but we've also got things like On Your Team, which is a programme for women that was introduced following a serious sexual assault in Chelmsford, which resulted in, you know, women from within the community applying and spending time with each other and us as well to increase their confidence and also deliver self-defence training. And we've also had significant number of events within the college and university campuses within the district and within the night-time economy area, with quite a significant amount of work, supported by some of the SVU funding that Mr Prof has pointed out in regards to preventative measures around drink spiking and ensuring that women and girls are safe in our night-time economy within the city centre. Couple more slides, please bear with me. Outside of that, we are also dealing with some of our wider community issues, so as I say, that was not an exhaustive list. We are regularly in attendance at various community events throughout the district in order to promote our good work and engage with the public to ensure that those relationships with our communities are built and remain strong, and some of those are listed there. And we've also made sure that we link in with our Community Safety Partnership colleagues, and also utilise the opportunity to conduct engagement events, but also where there's issues around antisocial behaviour or criminality within an area, so that we can also reinforce that visibility and prevention work, so that we're not going, you know, doing two things at the same time in relation to the same issue, but we're not in a joined-up way of thinking. One of the key things, and I know it's been mentioned previously around the purple flag and some of the work that we've done, we regularly hold nights of action, which is both, and you'll see some of those pictures there, so that I will point out, so the top-right picture, that is actually my local policing team, that's not my community policing team. So those officers are response officers that, on a specialist duty that they had where they weren't responsible for the responding to the incidents that night, they decided that they wanted to go out and do that work in the town centre to keep people safe within Chelmsford. Now, that's the sort of proactive work that obviously I look to try and promote, and it was very, very positive, they went out with CSP partners, now these would be officers that don't routinely work with council partners, so it's really, really positive, and it's something that we're looking to continue and replicate throughout the calendar year. And it just builds on that really strong work that we have, and that really strong partnership that we have within Chelmsford, that I am very proud of, and I'm looking to continue to foster. And then, last couple of slides, predominantly around engagement, as it's been pointed out on more than one occasion this evening, prevention is much better than detection, and we'd much rather prevent crime through engaging with our communities, building those relationships, and bringing people into the, having a confidence in policing in order to report issues before they become too challenging or not at all. So there's some of the things that we do to engage with the community, both young and old, and across a various different spectrum of individuals, inclusive of some of the work that we do around On Your Team, which for both male and female, to prevent and tackle social isolation, particularly, and mental health wellbeing in males. And then my last slide is again, very much on an engagement footing, and that is some of the strong work that we do in order to engage with our various communities within Chelmsford, to ensure that we have as good a relationship as we can, so that there's that confidence in reporting to any issues that they may be having, and also to provide us with enough information that we can possibly get in regards to how we can assist them should any issues arise. So that was my presentation. I apologise if I went a little bit fast at times, I was running out of water and a very dry mouth, so I do apologise in advance.
Chief Inspector Howard, thank you very much indeed, that was a fairly full and very detailed presentation. Have we got any questions for the Chief Inspector?
Sorry, can I start with one quick comment, and one follow with a quick question? The comment is about the, those clear-up rates. I should have said that that wasn't a criticism of Essex Police generally, or Essex Police in Chelmsford, because it's a national problem, so I'm not saying you're worse than nationally. And the specific question really relates to the slide you had that said more officers are being recruited on a rolling basis, which means more visibility on the street. And can I just ask, what should residents see in suburban areas, such as the ward I represent, in Newland Spring, Copperfield Place, where you're probably aware that there has been some police activity needed? But what should my residents see in terms of additional police presence from that extra recruitment, if any?
Thank you, councillor. First of all, in relation to your clarification, it was, I just wanted to give that local context around theft of motor vehicle, I know that wasn't your assertion, and, you know, as Mr Prof has said, we always want to try and do more and be better, so I just wanted to provide that context. In relation to your question, obviously, the terminology that's been used in the presentation is the rolling basis, and that is that, as Mr Prof has pointed out, and as we've said before, Essex Police, from an officer and staff perspective, is as big as we've ever been, and we are looking to retain those numbers. So we are continually, continuing to recruit on a rolling basis in order to retain those numbers and maintain that level, which is the largest we've ever been. What can your residents expect? Well, from my perspective as District Commander, they can expect to see more police on the streets, that's what I ask my teams to do, that's what I want to happen, and that's certainly the direction and the instructions that we give them. I think the thing for me, and the challenge for policing is always going to be, are we in the right places at the right time, based on the information that we have and the concerns that are raised to us by the community? Now, that isn't to put that on to the community to tell us about things, obviously, we do need that, and it's mostly, it's really important, but I would ask that we obviously will always respond and predict and try and be proactive around where we need to be at what times, but that is based purely on an information and intelligence basis. So if your residents feel that there are concerns that are not being addressed, or that there's not, you know, insufficient visibility of officers that they feel they should have in the areas, and there's reasons for that, then I would obviously urge them via yourselves to contact us, there's so many different means of contacting, there's obviously the Facebook, the Twitter, there's the Essex Police website, there's the Chelmsford District-specific section of the Essex Police Single Online Home, where we've got our direct phone number now that you can call the Community Policing Team between 8:00 and 10:00 in the evening, and speak to us directly, as well as all the various email addresses and stuff like that. So I accept that we may not be where we need to be all the time, and that's something that we are always trying to address by listening to the community, so if there are areas that you want us, then please just ask.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
I know you've explained all the community safety teams and your deployments, how many are on your response teams at any one time in Chelmsford?
So my response team's based at Chelmsford, they've got five inspectors, so I'm not, this is just the Chelmsford-specific, not the Maldon as well, just so I don't want anybody to get, feel that I'm getting it wrong. So I've got five inspectors, 15 sergeants, and 82 constables.
So how many would be on duty at any one time?
One inspector, two sergeants, and 17 constables.
Seventeen, thank you.
I just have one question, I noticed that you mentioned shoplifting is rising, and it's been an incredible problem up in London, where people have now got security guards on the doors, and it is obviously an indication of some level of violence and pressure on that. Do the police now attend shoplifting, and do they prosecute shoplifters?
Thank you. In answer to your question, yes and yes. And the rise of shoplifting in Chelmsford is actually one of those interesting statistics that probably isn't 100% attributable to just the negative side of things. So yes, there have been more reports of shoplifting, 100%, and that's, you know, a force-wide and a national issue. However, as part of the work that myself and my team and colleagues from the CSP have been doing is, there was a real significant concern raised last summer by partners within the bid in Chelmsford about the visibility and awareness and, you know, the interaction with businesses and shops in the city centre. So there's been quite a significant investment locally from Essex Police in how we can patrol that, and that's not just within Chelmsford District, but supported by our wider police family. Now, partly, some of the increase is going to be the increase in confidence with reporting to us, because, you know, we were having instances of under-reporting of shoplifting. So it is going to be both elements that have caused that rise in shoplifting, so it's both, it's not a whole negative or a whole positive. I would also say that our, the solved rate and the number of outcomes and prosecutions that we have for shoplifting specifically in Chelmsford has also increased in line with the increase in reporting.
Thank you very much. I think I can now move on to item 11. Oh, sorry, sorry, I missed you.
It wasn't a question, it's prior to the ECTU presentation, I should have said that I'm a representative from the City Council on the ECTU Committee, just in case I needed to say that.
Thank you very much for telling us. Well, we'll now have the presentation on the Essex County Wide Traveller Unit. Thank you.
Firstly, thank you very much for the invitation here this evening. The Essex County Wide Traveller Unit has been around since about 2013, and it kind of originated prior to that from the Travel Education Unit that used to exist within Essex County Council. It is a partnership, and that's, and it's a constituted partnership as well, and the council already there has said that she sits on the committee, which meets bi-yearly, and we report into the various members of that partnership and on our performance, and that governs our partnership as well. It's a partnership of 11 local authorities across Essex, and that's the 10, there's 10 district borough and city councils, plus a unitary, but also within the unit, they fund the unit as well in terms of the management of an authorised encampment, and hopefully for those who have benefit of the unit consider that to be good value for money, and that funding, for example, goes towards our staffing, legal costs, bail lift costs, et cetera. Thank you very much, Alec. The unit also has a partnership with Essex Police, and I think from the originations before the Royal Engagement Team, it was the Gypsyian Traveller Unit, from a single sergeant to how many officers you have supporting us now, and also there's been a long-term partnership with Essex Fire and Rescue in terms of supporting us in terms of fire risk assessment across the various traveller sites across Essex as well. The unit really has three functions, that's split between the unauthorised encampment side, of which the partners contribute towards, also there's a small team of our outreach who provide support in terms of advocacy, signposting, and support to families and individuals in terms of education and health and wellbeing needs, and then also separately to that, we do have the management of ECSC's owned 12 public Gypsyian traveller sites across Essex. I shall pass you over to my colleague now, Alec, who will go into great detail, sorry, I didn't press the button, regarding the management of authorised encampments.
Just to clarify, thank you very much, good evening everybody, just to clarify, that was the previous slide to back up Paul's introduction. So just to, I'll just run through the unauthorised encampment element of the unit, so just to define what an unauthorised encampment is, it's when an individual or a group of individuals with vehicles move onto a piece of land not owned by them, and so they do with the intention to reside on that land without permission of the landowner. So just to break that down a bit further, an encampment can be either on public or private land. ACT2, Essex County Wide Travelling, it will only directly manage encampments on public land relating to Essex County Council and the signed-up local authority partners. The local authority do have to follow specific legal frameworks to reclaim land from encampments, whereas the private landowners, they do have, do not have to follow the same stringent legal frameworks that we have to, and so, for example, they can use a common law route that could resolve their process a bit quicker than ours. Private caravans also, so landowners also do have the ability to call local police, and they can, to see if they can help in resolution of their encampments to, under their emergency police powers. So returning back to ACT2, we have two main local authority legal avenues, so we have the Section 77, 77 of the Criminal Justice Public Order Act 1994, or also, and that's via the Magistrates Court, we do have a Part 55, which is a possession claim via the Civil Procedure 1988, and obviously that's really county court. We do also have a, an ability of a non-legal course of a negotiated toleration for encampments under a code of travellers, that's a list of, we normally reserve that for rural and isolated encampments, that mainly on Essex County Council and mainly verges away from a settled population, and obviously that's under an agreement, a trust agreement, to follow the code of travellers, which is in terms of cleanliness of encampments, the size of encampments, and keeping themselves tidy and not obstructing highways, et cetera. So obviously, that is in line with planning, in the 28 days we give toleration for that period, however, if they renege on any of the code of traveller, the code, then we can revert back to our Section 77, 78 action on that group. So further to that, ACT2, we have agreed with members that there is an expectation that all encampments are resolved in seven to 10 working days, so with that in mind, our primary legal avenue is the 77, 78 of the Criminal Justice Public Order Act, that is because it's more robust in terms of timings with the court and the powers it allows us to remove encampments once a court order is served. So just a further breakdown, I won't go too much into detail on this one, this just breaks down the seven-day turnaround in how we process the encampment, so obviously, day one, we will serve a, we'll do our human rights assessment and welfare checks, that's where we gather the information on the caravans, vehicles, identify the location, find out who the landowner is, and the local owner business and the community impact, so that goes into a document that serves the purpose of welfare checks for the encampment, also the local, for a local area impacts as well. also the local, for a local area impacts as well, so it's done on a both, both fair way to understand what the actual issues are, and then that is presented to our legal team, and that has generated the direction to leave notice which is served on the encampment, which is the first stage, which is an informal pre-legal stage, say you have, you know, need to vacate our land. So once that, if they remain post that twenty-four hour period, then we can proceed to a more formal legal process, and you can see, and that can take three to four days to get into the courts. Once we get to the court and the court order is served, and us will serve that on the encampment, we have to give twenty-four hours further notice for them to vacate. If they fail to do that on the court order, then we have, we can proceed to have private bailiffs to conclude the encampment if required. So just a bit of further background, here is the current and historic ten-year trend of unauthorized encampments within Essex, this is all the Act Two partner areas, so all the reports into Act Two over that period, and as you can see, when we started in two thousand and thirteen, it has progressively got further up to our peak years of two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, but from two thousand and eighteen onwards, you can see the trend is gradually growing down, and the last two years definitely have seen the lowest impact of encampments within the County of Essex since the inception of the unit. So just to make it a bit more specific, here is the breakdown of the encampments into the Chelmsford area, and as you can see, from the same ten-year period, it sort of mirrors the actual previous slide of the, of the countywide areas. However, we do have twenty-twenty, which was a bit of an anomaly, there was a single family that spiked around the industrial areas around Christmas and January of twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. And just a further breakdown, these are the types of land, I split into three, so the red is Chelmsford City Council land, the blue is the private land, and the amber is the Essex County Council land, and as you can see, fairly split, so a lot of hit on Essex County Council land, obviously, you can see there's, the red of Chelmsford City Council is also incorporated under the agreement, so we've managed onto your encampments. So as you can see, it's quite a spread of where the travellers or the encampments land. And just a quick hotspot, so here are the three main areas that were hit the most in the period, so the periods are the below there, so obviously, Gallywood Common had about thirteen encampments in that period, and some of the industrial estates, Sheep Hopes and Namburn Link had thirty-two in that period, and obviously the biggest hit was Duke's Park Industrial Estate, which had a number of forty-five, that has the Montrose Road and Grafton Road, which had numerous encampments over that period. So just to round up the unauthorized bit for me, this is just the case study of the Waterhouse Lane Car Park on Meteor Way, which happened at the start of this year. So on day one, as referenced in the previous slides, our unauthorized encampment officers will go down and do our welfare checks, so this is what we encounter on day one, we'll take pictures of the area, understand if the encampments, what their intentions are, are there any needs in terms of health and welfare, so that's done on day one, then that's returned into the office, and so we can generate our pre-direction to leave notice, which is the polite request to ask them to vacate, obviously that's put onto the, any fixed landmark on the encampment, and obviously that's one of our enforcement officers there admiring his handiwork. So that's day two. So from there onwards, if they don't vacate the encampments, then we can proceed to go to formal legal proceedings, and that can take two or three days to get it all listed in the local magistrate's court. So once we get it returned from, from the magistrate's court, we can serve it on the encampment, so that's day four, and so that's served, and again, it's served on a fixed landmark within the area, and obviously we always relay into the encampment of what's happening, so they're always up to know, they're always up to date with what's, what's going to happen. And so normally that would proceed to a court hearing, but thankfully on this occasion, the encampment vacated on the fifth day after the court order was served, someone's was served, pardon me, and so after that they're vacated, and obviously they've left their bag of rubbish quite neatly actually, to be fair, and obviously we refer that over to the City Council Refuge Team to collect that once, once they're vacated, and obviously this encampment did actually migrate up to Colchester, and so we started the same similar proceedings, as you can see in the top bit of the slide. And so the impact days in Chelmsford for this year at the moment is currently five. And so that concludes my part of the unauthorized encampments. Thank you very much. I'll pass over to Paul.
Thank you very much, Alec. So as I mentioned at the beginning as well, it's not just the unauthorized encampment aspect we manage. Here's a slide here, it shows the twelve Essex County Council-owned traveller sites spread across Essex. This is largely really through historic, I understand, many years ago there was a kind of, been different changes and repealing of legislation when Essex County Council was, did have responsibility for the delivery of traveller sites, but now that kind has now gone over to local planning authorities to identify a need and to also allocate land and make designations on that kind of basis. So you can see there, we've got the two in Chelmsford that we have, which is our Cranham Hall, Cranham Hall back of Drake's Lane, it's got a back of Beaulieu, and also we've got Lady Grove, which is just outside of Riddle, and currently both our sites are at full capacity. Just to give some more information, this is information came at the twenty-seventeen Gypsyian Traveller Accommodation Needs Assessment, I understand, I think Chelmsford is currently being undertaken, most of the districts and boroughs and cities across Essex are updating this, and again, this feeds into local area plans and planning documentation, but as you can see, I've just highlighted there, back there, that is the kind of range of sites that we have, I think that equates to kind of twenty-five sites across Essex, which of course, Chelmsford is about a hundred and thirty-two pitches, you've got our two sites at the top, and then we've got the listed of the private sites, and then also I'll just add it on to that, the new kind of nine pitch Drake's Lane site that is operated by Chelma Housing Partnership. In addition, we provide outreach services, I have three FTEs, but obviously, and we've been talking about resourcing earlier, you can never match the kind of resourcing to the demand across Essex. Predominantly, they provide in terms of advocacy, support, predominantly in the kind of areas of access to education, so that can be from accessing the education through home-to-school transport for transition between primary school into secondary school, and equally going on to further education as well. We also support, if there's any bullying at school, racism, and also retention and within the schools as well. And in addition there, we offer access, well, support into health and wellbeing, the unit actually sits within public health at Essex County Council, so that does help to support kind of a more into the wider determinants of the house, but predominantly that kind of is more very much frontline into access into different agencies, whether it be registering with primary care, doctors, dentists, assisting incidents of measles cases, you've probably seen across the country, and we're assisting immunisation teams in terms of MMR measles and kind of debunking some of the myths that went with that many, many years ago. And we've also helped very recently, not in Chelmsford but in Braintree, we had an outbreak of viral, or an identified case of, not an outbreak, an identified case of viral meningitis, where we helped the UK Health Protection Agency access the site, provide information to the residents on that site, track where residents have been to ensure that who they've made contact with, and equally to ensure that antibiotics and, again, immunisation was up to date there. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? councillor Wilson first.
Okay, very quick question, actually, very simple. Signed up-
He won't be silenced. Carry on councillor Steele.
Signed up LA Local Authority Partners, does that include parish councils?
Where we have the districts or the local authorities, where they've got parish councils, we do undertake that management of unauthorized encampments on their land.
So was that, yes, sorry, I didn't quite get, yes, okay, thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair, I'll get there eventually. Yes, thank you very much, a very interesting presentation, you two, very good. Going back to your outreach services, I'm just interested to know, if you are providing quite a lot of support to this community, is there any evidence that educational attainment is rising, or is there any sort of evidence of going on to higher education, for instance, from school?
From, from the interventions that we do as a service, our team works very much on a case management, so it is a very minute, localised, working with families, young people. Where we have been involved, there is evidence that young persons do go on to further education, or indeed transition from primary to secondary school, where perhaps that may not have occurred before, and we also support other areas such as digital inclusion as well, so where predominantly there may be online courses, or where they need to have sort of IT skills or access to laptops, that kind of thing, to support training and skills, we, you know, we do help and assist there. Whether or not, I don't have evidence across the piece, but from the cases that actually we're involved with, you can say that there are successes within there in supporting those young persons throughout their kind of education skills and employability.
Thank you, that answers my question very well, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and it's purely to support what you've been saying, because I listen each time I go along to the meeting, and the amount that a very few officers are doing in the outreach area is absolutely amazing. They, like when we spoke about the police, how many police are there, how more, much more we could do if we had more, then that is true as well, but they do face very specific problems, and I just think they overcome them very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So are all one hundred and thirty-two official traveller site in the Chelmsford area, are they all currently at full capacity? Have I understood that correctly?
I can't comment unfortunately on the private sites because we don't have any kind of jurisdiction or site of that. I think that would be, something would come out of the GTAA, so the Gypsyian Traveller Accommodation Assessment for Chelmsford, I understand, is being undertaken, or it's in its final stages of being, the draft being presented, so I would say that that information or that documentation and that analysis and research would give that indication. From our two sites that ECC owns and operates, yes, that is at full capacity.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer, so-
Your mic's not on.
So would it be, would it be fair to say that there's probably a chronic shortage of facilities for people who live as travellers, who are travellers?
I think, again, that would have to be from the outcome of the Gypsyian Traveller Accommodation Assessment, I mean, the last one was done, I think, in twenty-seventeen, based on probably years' data per from that, and the data that's collected looks at various aspects from growth in family sizes and peripatetic nature of the travelling community, et cetera, and on the back of that, that would give recommendations to future pitch provision, what would be required within the Chelmsford area, and what would be seen in the local area plans.
I'm conscious of the time, but can I just share briefly? If I understood these slides, there were two incidents in twenty-twenty-three on Chelmsford City Council land, and fifty percent of that total was in my ward, and an unauthorized encampment arrived on the Sunday evening. When I got round, because residents had alerted me on the Monday morning, the Essex Police Rural Engagement Team were there, I thought their intervention was excellent, they'd gone in, they'd spoken to the people on the site, they'd explained to them very clearly what they could and couldn't do, and we started to go through the process that Mr Baker had described, but they breached the code by the Wednesday, and Essex Police had invoked their powers and removed them from the site. So that was a very effective thing to happen from my perspective, and I think from a councillor's perspective, the one thing that was helpful to know was, what the heck do you do? What do you advise your residents to do? And the explanation I got from the police was, was very helpful in enabling me to summarise what the likely course of action was, either on the basis of the Act Two approach and going through the courts on that basis, or the police using their powers. So I think if we, if we can share that so that ward councils are aware, then that would be helpful, although thankfully, as I say, there only were two last year, so hopefully we won't be troubled.
Perhaps post the meeting, we could have an example of that that we could circulate, I think that would be very helpful. I think it's true to say that the positive action that's been taken very swiftly is a great way of dealing with what can be some very antisocial issues when people find them in their parks, et cetera. Are there any other questions? I just have one, but if I can just ask then, you've had a very significant impact on the numbers of illegal or unauthorized encampments. Where have people gone? Where have the travellers gone? You know, you've gone in terms of hundreds, haven't you, you've dropped the number, so where are they?
Thank you. So we obviously can't track them, so we understand that maybe it's more of a cultural thing when they're not travelling as much as they used to, especially in the last, as I say, the slide shows that, so it's probably, they're just not really prepared to go out like they used to, mainly because the income streams are not where, and the jobs are not there, such as the trees or the weighing in, you have to be a lot more certified and registered these days in these traditional jobs that they used to undertake. Also, sometimes they buy lots of their own land now and try and, try and get retrospective planning permission on there, to reside on there, so, but I think the main one is maybe the Covid aftermath sort of prevented a trickle of encampments, but they might just be in a different part of the countr, country, they might have just exhausted their roots here, or in terms of employment, or just fancy somewhere else, so we believe they're the main, the main issues. Obviously, the way we obviously conduct our unauthorized encampments with the police, it's a dual approach, they do their assessments, we do our assessments, so they're constantly being engaged with to make sure, you can't do this, you have to vacate, you know, and so a clear, firm and consistent approach to both our elements, I think definitely helps with, you know, saying that, you know, you won't be tolerated if you behave on public land, so I think they're the key aspects, I think.
I mean, I think it's true to say, from what we've seen, there's a very organised and sharp approach which is consistent across the board, so I think there's a clear message that people can't just put up these encampments and not expect to be challenged, so it's very helpful. I'd just like to thank all the contributors this evening for the very length, not lengthy, but very detailed presentations. I'm sorry that the time is quite constrained, but I think we've gathered from this enough to understand the huge amount of work that we should all be grateful for that's going on in very many different areas, so thank you very much for attending and thank you very much for giving the information to us. And we only have a couple more items on the agenda, you'll be glad to know, which I think will be quite quick, I think. So we'll go to those. I did miss one, which was any cordial items, it was number seven, which there aren't any, so we can move on from that. And we're now on item twelve, the work programme, which again has been pre-circulated, just a comment on that, the theatre refurbishment project evaluation task and finish has met, which I think you've seen earlier on in some of the detail that was provided, and the terms of reference as they had before were agreed, and obviously we await their- And obviously we await their report as and when that is available and finished. So in terms of the term, the workload and the reports that have been confirmed, we had a meeting scheduled for the 22nd of April, that was our next scheduled meeting. Because that now sits in Perdah with the crime commissioner elections, that cannot go ahead because of that reason, I'm informed. And so I think what we have decided is that the programme will shift to the June, the June programme, because there is fairly light programme there. So that is what is going to happen unless anyone's got any specific objections or reasons that that shouldn't take place.
That, I thought the council could carry on its standard and normal business, even during Perdah, unless it had a direct impact on the actual elections, which looking at the items for April, I wouldn't have thought they would have.
I think the adjudication on that is that because matters would be discussed that might promote particular parties, particularly as we have portfolio holders coming to the meeting, that because it was an urgent meeting matter, we should move it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. In terms of urgent business, I have been, not been notified of any. I have no urgent business, so I would declare the meeting now closed. Thank you everyone for your attendance and patience and thank you again for our contributors. Thank you.